Welcome, everyone. We're going to call the order. The Ring of Meeting of Plain Township Board Trustees for July 23, 2013. To order, why don't you everybody stand and join us in singing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff? I do have one addition I would like to add under the Sheriff's report. Under the Sheriff's report, I would like to put dumping at Oakwood Square Plaza.
And, Mr. President, I can remove under perks and facilities, number one, the bathrobe cup.
And, does anybody else have any changes? Okay, hearing on the agenda will stand. We do have a 6:15 p.m. and a 6:30 p.m. hearings, one for the public, hearing on Lexington Farms, number three, for the lighting district, and 2014 alternative tax budget. We will stop the agenda accordingly by that time.
Let the record reflect them false. Excuse absence.
Anything else? Okay, we will go to the Sheriff's report. I'll turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one, I'll turn over to Mr. Haas in regards to Berkey and fireworks.
Oh, yeah. I was out, it would be two Saturdays ago. I was out in the area. And resident had noted that off of, off of Berkey. Did you mention the address? I can't have it right. It was something, it was like '83 or '84. I can be wrong, I'll circle back. Um, Berkey between about 12 o'clock midnight to about 4 a.m., typically on the weekends, this house decides to throw up some fireworks. And the individual I was talking, talking to, you know, younger family along with two neighborhoods, and, you know, they said they've tried to speak to the individuals before, but it's like they roll in from probably being out on the night and think it's cute to, you know, wake everybody else up by lighting on fireworks. So, I told him I would put it on the record. They said they've called the ESO before, but, you know, part of it's catching them in the process of doing it. So, he said it'd been a while. So, I told him I'd bring it back up again, but I can't give the more precise address.
I can email you with the address. I had emailed it for the agenda, maybe she just took it off, but I do have the address. I'll email it to you.
Then we've already talked about, I don't want the, uh, it was through there today. Uh, it'll be going through there. Okay. There we go. Keep an eye on things. Okay.
And then items two through four, I believe, are Mr. Ayse knows.
Yeah, they were requested by either residents or one is from the Sheriff's Department on Bradford. I let the speed buddy out there and Detective has the, the speeds on.
And what is the speeds as an average in that job?
A lot of the averages are below the posted, but there are a lot of above-average speeds.
Molder seams.
Molder seams, people were saying.
And there was a high traffic volume on, well, I didn't realize.
A lot of that's through.
They're cutting through that much.
We had to get the apple grill from Mount Pleasant or the other way around.
Molder to Peachmont, pound.
Extra patrol. Some 45 and overs, seven or eight.
These areas must be sitting at that rate.
She's sitting right behind you.
We'll take the rest of your vehicle out.
We got resident, he had pubs doing cruisers sitting in the driveway, running around.
Not that's funny because they come around that corner. Eric knows, he's, you know, they come around, they fly around.
Yeah, it's quick, they go quick through there.
Yeah, no, I'm here. That's the end of the Sheriff's report on the agenda.
I have, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thing, um, dumping. Ed Devila, um, from Oakwood Square Properties, um, came tonight specifically to talk to this. I think he had pictures emailed to me yesterday. Um, and had called Adriana, which is the other property manager. Um, there's a lot of dumping starting to take place. Um, they're in the process of doing, you know, doing a lot of work inside the plaza right now. Um, not as soon as they, Al will tell you that they painted the back murbs. Not, they painted the back of that building, they've already started to spray graffiti on it again. And, um, two weeks ago, when I was here, we were going around the back of the building, and a light blue minivan come flying out. Um, and there was about 26 tires dumped in the loading dock of the Giant Eagle. Yesterday, somebody drove by and dropped off four used toilets, um, unused truck cap, and some other filthy material, um, yesterday, um, on the side where the Goodwill trailer's at. So, I think what we need to do, we need to make sure that we have a deputy in this quadrant cruising through there on a regular basis because people are utilizing it basically to discard whatever they have. Um, it's going to be unfortunate because I know a lot of people do utilize that Goodwill drop-off, but it's to the point right now where he feels it's attracting people just to bring anything they can, and Goodwill truck won't take it, they'll drive around back to the building to drop it. And he's getting to the point, I think, where he's going to probably remove that. And right now, I know a lot of people do use that truck drop-off, help with Goodwill, so...
I think we may be even able to utilize our lid control guys with them to help keep an eye on that with, uh, with specific tires and things of that nature.
It's happened quite often, and, I mean, they're, they're starting to get very concerned about it because every time they clean it up, they come back a week later and there's all kinds of stuff dumped again. Um, so I told them I would make sure that we've got an extra patrol driving around on a regular basis back there for them because there is a certain paint on the back wall. And they just painted the whole back of the building. Okay, that's it for the Sheriff's report. Does anybody in the audience want? If anybody from the media has got any questions, important, we'll go to, uh, the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer number one is a request for a resolution. I'm at Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of a pending warrants in an amount of $140,477.88.
Also moved. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of a regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
Also moved. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Is that Mr. Leno on the second?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment for the following medical claims provided by Benefit Services.
So moved. Second, any discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the investment report.
Still in stellar interest rates?
Fiscal Officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
I'll assume the authority to pay. Second, Mr. Haas, any discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And that concludes the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. We'll go to the administrator's report.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to authorize a purchase and payment of a thousand curb markers from Daz Curb Markers, not fifty, $2,680.24.
So moved. Second, discussion.
These are the curb markers which we are marking all the storm drains with. It was a five-year project. Uh, the goal was to have every single one of our storm drains marked by volunteers, um, boy scouts, girl scouts, volunteers in the community. These last thousand will get, um, all of them complete all throughout Plain Township. We probably will be the only, um, township, city, village that will have completed this project. So, it's a huge accomplishment, thanks to Sean Moriarty who leads it, and all of the volunteers, and it's all done by volunteer work throughout the project.
And I have noticed, uh, on my runs, more and more of these things popping up than I was asking about.
Also, uh, administrator, roll.
It's already, sorry.
I was, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the fire report.
This is Chairman. Item number one is a resolution to reimbursement for Rob Morton for $318.50 for self-timer membership according to provision 37 of Detective Murray agreement.
So moved. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number two is reimbursement and payment to Doug Woodward for $350 for self-timer membership according to provision 37 of Detective Murray agreement.
So moved. Second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to purchase gas, wind, and oil diesel fuel, cost not to exceed $20,000, in cap 10, 8, or 9.
So moved. Second, any discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And number four, item number four is to authorize a purchase and payment of Unimac gear washer, Linky, for the tax quotes, in an amount not exceeding $1,000.
I'll, so move on that.
I'll second it. Discussion?
This is for the new station, correct? This is a larger capacity than, and it exists within the current stations, which are, quite frankly...
We have three other ones. We have three, the gear washer ran out, the other three stations have one, three's advised. A little bit smaller capacity, this is the next size up.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number five is to authorize a purchase and payment for tires, Winke, commercial tires, in an amount not to exceed $6,000.
I'll see what fire department buy. Second, any discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And item number six is a resolution, uh, from General Contractor 009, VTC Inc., for additional work in an amount of $6,593.18. This is a couple of things, upgrade the vision panels in the garage doors, additional floor finishes in rooms, and then to add an additional striping in the upper end, square or forty strip.
What about you of, uh, fire number six? Second. Further discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And item number seven is to authorize a purchase and payment of Toshiba, uh, since this is, is the equipment based on the phone system, additional phones and licensing for a new station, and programming by PBC Inc., in an amount not to exceed $3,500.
Also moved. I'll second it. Discussion?
This, this currently mirrors what the rest of our system is.
Exactly. Rob and I worked together, and we got the, with that, and we see, and, uh, discussed what type of phones and, uh, additional equipment we'll need over that station.
Now, just for clarification, will this be automated further, or are we taking anything that's...
We'll take some phones here, too.
Okay.
It'll actually be connecting to the phone server we already, we purchased two years ago here, so...
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to stop, the government, it's over. I wanted to get through that, then we're going to go to the 6:15 public hearing for Lexington Farms, number three, the lighting district. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, tonight's a scheduled time for the hearings for the Lexington Farms Lighting District. This is obviously new construction, all the lots are owned by one owner.
Nobody present on the record reflect that there is nobody present to speak for or against the lighting district. This application is being made for by the developer?
Correct.
Okay. Um, does any board member have any questions? If not, that'll close the public hearing. Um, and does that need to be passed by a resolution?
Correct.
I will move with adoption of the lighting district for Lexington Farms, number three. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, we'll stop again here, 10 minutes for the, uh, alternative tax budget hearing. Uh, let's go to the road department, Mr. Ayse, no?
Mr. President, item number one is a resolution to participate with Stark County Engineers Cooperative Purchase and Install Program for 2013 and 2014 season, at $48.32 a ton dumped.
Also move on road one.
I'll second it.
Just as a clarification, what is that rate? An increase or a decrease?
It came down to $0.67 a ton. No big change, if it come down, I guess that's positive.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution authorized to purchase of miscellaneous snow pile parts, including snow wheels, assemblies, lift cylinders, angle cylinders, broom, extension kits, boom extension kits, excuse me, for a black owned machine.
On road two? Second discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes. Doesn't seem like we have a summary yet, the way, the way the weather's been weird. I wouldn't be surprised if it snows next week.
Just trying to get an error.
No, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised.
Oh, I typically get the first word.
It's usually going to come to our toe.
Not far right now.
Ask me to snow in September now.
You will now.
We'll remind you.
Four hatchets on YouTube.
Yeah, it's there for the world to see.
Item number three is a resolution to authorize the purchase and installation of a new fill tank monitor, probes, and sensors for music service station.
Also move on road number three.
I'll second it. Discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And item number four is a resolution to enter into contract with Obo's reconstruction for the 2013 payment marking program, particularly created by August 1st.
So move on road four. I will second it. Any discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We'll go to the zoning department, I'm going to let...
I'll be taking that, yes. Uh, this evening, you have two nuisance abatements before you, uh, number one, A and B.
This part, I'm going to move on one A and B. I'll second it. Discussion. On discussion on one, on one A, this house looks pretty, I would consider pretty bad disrepair. Can we make sure that any case look at that being part of the moving-of-how forward grant?
Yes.
If it is legitimate, I'm just basing this upon the pictures I'm seeing here.
Yes.
Well, the other issue with, you look at the pictures of this one house, too, like you look at their graffiti being painted on it, I don't know if the house is fully secured. Looks like people are going in and out of it. So, we also need to make sure that this house is fully secured and ain't no...
Yes. Derek, when he has permission to own the property and his crew, will secure the building. That's one of the things that they do do, but, um, I will make sure that that is on the list if I'm moving-of-how forward.
No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Um, there is one property, I know we have abandoned before, Lisa, and I wanted to bring it up to you tonight, it's on East, I believe it is a vacant veterans home.
Yes.
Um, the tree fell across the front of the house, it's hanging there, and it's a pretty big, um, sized piece of tree that's laying out there, and that could create a hazard for these people living around that house.
I will start after the meeting tonight with some emails, getting back, moving forward, and we'll have some answers for you tomorrow.
Okay. And because the grass again is probably, but 12 inches high again, and the tree has been there, I've noticed for about 10 days.
It's not longer, yes.
That was the last big storm we had.
Mm-hmm. Yes. I will start that fall rolling this evening.
Okay.
And then, for the board, I have a resolution for the nuisance payments, that's two A through two O.
I will so move on, is that two A through O?
Second.
Two A through?
Two O.
O, as a nuisance payment, so, any discussion?
Just a nice comment to the crew that's keeping these things under control for us, so, that's it all.
Certainly. And with all the rain we're getting, it's difficult to keep it up. But I think what we really need to do is especially, I, I know we probably don't know which ones of these that are vacant homes. I think these houses should be mandatorily inspected at least every two weeks, to see that they're, instead of waiting for people to call a complaint, I think we need to take a little bit more proactive approach, um, and stay on top of it.
Yeah, but I know that's what transpired last year, and that's why they were, um, cut more frequently before the complaints, I mean, they were always complained about. They're the ones that you see every single year, so, I will get that process.
Yes, we should have to wait for...
No, that's what I mean.
A resident that is adjacent or near, and call them.
No, these are, these ones are the ones that are always complained about, so, starting a process like that will lessen those complaints because they're given to be on the list.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, there's nothing other person that's holding these things, Lisa. All directed at the silent, we will go to communications.
Yes, I received an email from Coleman Mediation Services, and then I had a follow-up conversation with Lisa P. Kuzmetay, who's the director, and assured her that we do use the Coleman Mediation Services, that is who we refer, any residents who have a neighbor versus neighbor dispute. Um, I know we've had, uh, a lot of neighbors actually go through that mediation with Coleman, and, uh, it has ended, uh, pretty well. They've avoided, um, any, you know, ending up in court, or any other issues that they may have, neighbor versus neighbor. So, um, I did let her know that we do use those. She has sent us some more brochures, we had those out front. So, again, I just told her I put on record that we do have that service available to any of our residents. It is on a sliding scale for them, uh, for residents, and, and they are highly effective. So, we did follow-up today, and we'll continue, um, going that route in those cases. And that's the end of communications.
Okay. Um, we're going to go to the portion for public speech. I think we'll close that. I hate to curse, I suppose we could be on page one if I was just needing some time right here. I haven't seen the executive session.
I know.
Um, but we have a two-minute delay between our next, if you approve the...
Approved it.
Yes, as approved, that's for July 9, 2013. Also moved. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Okay, well, take a, uh, two-minute recess. We're going to call the, the back order, we're going to go to the 6:30 hearing on the 2014 alternative tax budget. I'll turn that over to Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you all. Actually, you know, we have a fiscal officer who takes an interest now in the budget, so, he was very hands-on with each of the departments, department heads, um, with the budget, so, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flex because he, uh, really put this together. We, again, worked as a team, but he, he really put this alternative tax budget, spent a lot of hours, um, at the township, and not at the township, of his own time putting this together, so, I don't want to take any credit away from Mr. Flex with this.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Luther, Luther did a good job working on this this year, it's his first, first one that put him out there to work on a lot, so, thank Luther for that. Uh, what you see is, uh, pretty much a good snapshot of where we think we are and where we think we're going. Uh, the department heads have responded with what they think might be a carryover, an additional spending that they're going to need, uh, in 2014. Again, this is just the proposed alternative tax budget at this time, obviously, not the end of the year, so, some of the numbers could change depending on, um, what is actually spent and, uh, and what's moved in, maybe extra budget, so... Obviously, it's pretty comprehensive, I, I won't call up many questions, maybe it's a nice, but, uh, as you look through it over the next couple of weeks, if you have questions, give it...
What does it have to be specified?
We have until, let's see, it'll have to be approved at our next meeting to be on time. Um, I believe it's the, the one of the arms, that's that, uh, that's a two thing.
What approximately is our, we're projecting our carryover? So, we're going to carry over from 13 to 14?
For the, yeah, for the general fund.
Correct, for the general fund.
Yeah, 2.596.
So, we're going to carry over 2.5.
Mm-hmm. And that's knowing that we have some big projects ahead of us, and that money is, um, that money is accounted for, um, with purchase of, uh, vehicles for police, with the renovation of this building, um, you'll see in the general fund, the addition of the Linford Storm Sewer Project, which at minimum is around $300,000. Um, we have, um, we are looking at the upgrade to, uh, the Diamond Park Facility, um, we are looking at a storage facility for vehicles and equipment, uh, down at the road garage for all of our vehicles and equipment. So, that 2.5 carryover is, uh, it sounds fantastic, but it is well accounted for.
Well, bottom line is that we're financially sound.
Oh, absolutely.
Unlike our, like our... Maybe you're dealing with, uh, on your rent.
Yes.
Derek, I'm looking for the, um... Eric, I'm looking for the, what is the protected role of all funds? Seventeen point, is that correct?
As far as the budget for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, it's seventeen point one. That's about a very large page.
That's definitely true.
Well, you got a road, we had the fire station, the parks that were on there the beginning last year's budget looked a lot larger.
Yeah.
But still, it's, you know, it's down.
Yeah.
Our budget's seventeen point one. Will this change your carryover? I know that we have some projects planned slated.
Yes.
The reason, sure, I was just hoping you'd say that.
Of North Canton and more power.
I think the, I just heard the number was like forty-six, forty-five, forty-six million dollars. That's two and three-quarter times what we have here.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to bring it up, but I just got a little inside.
And keep in mind, the fire station is a big part of that, but we've also, and it's not as big, but that brought that down, is we did a significant storm sewer project. We have the restroom project. We did have some other pretty good meat and potato projects, too.
Yeah, but without that stuff, I think our budget was projected to be somewhere at eight point four million.
Yes.
We're still down another million dollars going into 14.
Yes.
We're not cutting services. We're still carrying over money.
Correct.
The mathematical question is, how can we do this in communities a third our size spend three times as much?
Correct.
I think it's a lot of efficiency to form a government. So congratulations to Fire, Road, Parks, Fiscal, everybody collectively. I don't think our residents experience any difference in services for what we spend versus what, and I hate to say it a lot, North Canton, because it is a very nice community, but I don't think people will notice the difference between, well, I think they can't notice differences between our roads versus some of these other roads. Especially our money to spend now. I think our, I think everything speaks for itself. And credit to all our departments and employees. So just jumble it on you guys. Okay, we will close that, and if anybody has any questions, between now and the next meeting, we'll give a beginning, beginning, the end. Resolution for the executive session, being hereby resolved by the Plain Towne County Board of Trustees Star County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session at 6:42 PM from this regular meeting of July 23, 2013, is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 1.22G for the purpose and consideration of: One, A, appointment of a public employer official; One, B, employment of a public employer official; One, E, promotion or demotion of a public employer official; One, F, compensation of a public employer official; One, A, the purchase of real personal tan or tangible property; Three, in conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning pending or under court action; And four, preparing for, conducting, reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees. Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why we're coming back up to take care of, because we finished our regular portion of our agenda very quickly, and the family of Jeff Barr was not here at that time. And the whole purpose of this is to show recognition to Jeff Barr for his Eagle Scout project that he did for us in the, one of our Plain Towne Park's over on Schneider, Schneider Road. And if Jeff, if you can come up right now. Now, this is a real honor for me, and I know Al especially appreciates this because he was an Eagle Scout. I didn't get anywhere near that. I was a scout, I didn't get to an Eagle Scout person, but I've known you, Jeff, since you were a little kid, and you're turning into quite the flying young adult. And for what you did over there at the Schneider Park will be part of that park for years, hopefully decades to come. But on behalf of the board to show recognition, the contribution you did to the Plain Towne County community, we would like to give you this plaque, certificate of appreciation with your name on it, recognizing what you did and in the background of your project, in the background of the certificate showing exactly what you did, so you can have that hanging on your wall as you go forward in life. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, you know, just from my understanding, you know, there's nothing more important than public service. I can tell you, foundation of my own experience was, I was over in Troop 36, boy scouts in East Canton by the time, wherever I was at when I was sixteen, unfortunately, cars, girls, the work got in the way. And I never finished it out, so trust me, I appreciate the focus and the determination, really what you've done to help make our community park more of an accessible and convenient for folks to navigate through, instead of having to circle all the way around, they can cut down through. It really is an awesome project, so, you know, kudos.
You know how I feel, being an Eagle Scout. I know it's a lot of hard work. There's times where I almost just thought, wow, you know, how many more of these can I keep doing? And you've got to stay focused, like Trustee Hawes said, it's tough. And you've reached that moment now, when that Eagle project starts, and you know you're right there. And great job for that hard work, because a lot of young kids, they drop out because it is a challenge. And I'm proud of you that you stayed with it, and you'll hold that forever. I'm still proud of what I did.